The House will come to order. Members, please take their seats. Sergeant at Arms.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to privileges on the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by Reverend F. Todd Gray, Senior Pastor, Fifth Street Baptist Church in Richmond, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Let us pray. O God, I help in ages past, our hopeful years to come, a shelter in the stormy blast in our eternal home. We thank you for those that have the privilege that they may bless your people in their representation of them. I pray that in these powerful days that you anoint them with your presence and protection. I pray also for their families that have sacrificed that they may serve. Grant unto each of our proxy that they may possess ears to hear your people, heart to serve your people, and the wisdom to lead your people. Let them not be unduly influenced by the sway of the powerful and neglect the needs of the powerless. Grant unto them the acumen to be faithful to the interests of the individual districts that they serve, and yet mindful of the collective enterprise of the Commonwealth that they occupy. In this daunting challenge, guide them to the common good of this Commonwealth. In this place where deliberation is expected in the highest order, where there's difference of opinion and sometimes contentious debate, let them be generous in their consideration of one another, genuinely interested in the opinions of one another, and sensitive to the compact that they have made with one another to lead us all. Anoint them with your Spirit that your purpose will be revealed, that your will will be fulfilled, and your people will be enhanced. Let the power and Spirit of your presence be in this place now and forever, in the name that is above every other. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board.
Madam Speaker, Aquaram is present.
Pursuant to House Rule 3, I have examined and approved the Journal for the House of Delegates for Monday, January 27, 2020. Motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to provisions of Rule 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the First Morning Hour Order of Business, including any clerk's announcements and communications.
First Morning Hour Order of Business pursuant to House Rule 40, the Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak button. I have no announcements.
The delegate from Washington, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate O'Quinn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Join us in the back of the gallery today. We have Katie Brown, and I would ask that she please stand. Katie's the new producing artistic director at Barter Theater, and only the fourth person to hold this position in Barter's prestigious 87-year history. And Madam Speaker, she's the first woman to hold this position as well. And while new to this role, Katie actually has over 21 years of service to Barter Theater. So many of you may or may not know that Barter Theater is the state theater of Virginia, where they draw in nearly 150,000 visitors annually with an economic impact of $34 million. Barter is the nation's longest-running professional theater, and if you've not had the opportunity to visit, you have missed out, and we would be glad to have you visit Abingdon, Virginia. So on behalf of the Southwest Virginia delegation, I hope you will give Katie a warm House welcome.
Congratulations, Katie, and it's a privilege to have you here today as one of the regional co-founders of the Arts Caucus in the General Assembly. I'm especially thrilled to have the opportunity to meet you. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Delegate from Pennsylvania, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Adams, you have the floor.
Thank you. Joining us in the gallery today are members of the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission, and I'd ask that they stand. The primary mission of the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission is to act as a voice for Pennsylvania County youth in serving as a link between students and elected county and state officials, and it was my privilege to be able to welcome them to my office earlier this morning, and I ask that you'll join me in giving them a warm House welcome.
Great to see the Youth Commission here, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate McQuinn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and my fellow colleagues of the House. This afternoon, I have the honor and pleasure of introducing some extraordinary women, and they are the National Coalition of 100 Black Women. There are four groups that are represented here: Charlottesville, Northern Virginia, Richmond, and the Tidewater Chapter. Structured for action, the National Coalition of 100 Black Women are committed to being a united voice for more than 20 million African-American women in the United States. As a leadership forum, it serves as a role model to help elevate the quality of life for young Black women and other African-American women in transition. As an organization, I'm going to ask that they are standing, as an organization of career, professional, and volunteer women, it draws upon the strength of its membership to work towards solutions on issues of concern to the contemporary African-American woman. As a network, it serves as a vehicle of communication among Black women for their own personal and professional development. And as an advocacy group, it collectively seeks the political and economic empowerment of Black women as a means of gaining access to mainstream America. Finally, this organization is visiting the General Assembly today to advocate for increasing the minimum wage, criminal justice reform, gender and racial equity, and many other issues. So my colleagues would please join me in giving these amazing women, these extraordinary women, the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the Virginia Chapters of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women. Thank you for being a voice for so many, more than 200 million Black women in the United States, and for standing up in support of so many important issues. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise today for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Delaney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, today in the gallery, we have advocates from Decoding Dyslexia, a grassroots coalition of parents from across Virginia focused on linking parents to resources, support, and educational interventions for dyslexia. They aim to increase awareness of dyslexia, empower families to support their children, and inform policymakers on best practices to identify, remediate, and support students with dyslexia. Decoding Dyslexia has strongly supported my House bill, 410, which would require schools to disclose parents when their children undergo dyslexia screening. They are also advocating for teacher and staff training on dyslexia, evidence-based dyslexia remediation programs, early screening tests for dyslexia, and access to appropriate assistive technologies in public schools for students with dyslexia. They are an essential advocacy group here in Virginia, and I am grateful for their work. It is my distinct honor that several of these advocates are constituents in the 67th, and I am proud to call them my friends. Please join me in giving them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the group, Decoding Dyslexia. Thank you all for being here, thank you for what you do, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Plum.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an announcement.
Delegate Plum, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker and members of the House, I hope you've noticed on your calendar before this evening at 5 o'clock at the Hilton Downtown, the Tesla Motor, Capitol Hill Motor Club is going to be there, and they're inviting us to join them. Those of us who are Tesla owners will be there. Unfortunately, I won't have my car because my wife has it for the week. Madam Speaker, I do also want to bring to your attention the fine print on the invitation. The fine print says, "Consumers Beware: Continued Exposure to This Product May Lead to an Irresistible Urce to Purchase It." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate Plum. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise today for an introduction.
Delegate Adams, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members of the House. Gallery today, we have students and representatives of Riverside School, which is in my district, located in Bonner and Chesterfield. They are here as part of Decoding Dyslexia, Virginia's Dyslexia Advocacy Day. Riverside School is an independent, private school that teaches students from kindergarten through eighth grade who have dyslexia or other language-based challenges, using individualized curriculum, one-on-one instruction, and a nurturing environment to enhance the learning experiences of children who attend the school. Dyslexia is the most common learning disability in the United States. Individuals from Riverside School are here to meet with their legislators and educate us further about the fact that almost one in five Virginians are affected by dyslexia. Riverside School is a shining example for providing opportunities of excellence in school for all children, and I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to give them a warm
It's great to see all of you from Riverside School. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Hope it's a great experience. Thanks for being here. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, today we were truly blessed by the presence of Reverend F. Todd Gray, who provided our prayer today. Reverend Gray is an Ohio native, but we're going to claim him here in Virginia nonetheless. Reverend Gray is a graduate of Ohio University in the Samuel Dewitt Proctor School of Theology. He pastors Fifth Street Baptist Church and has truly had a revival of that church and a growth in that church. Reverend Gray's work is truly something to behold, not only inside the walls of the church, but outside in the community, where they have become an integral partner and part of the Northside community as well as the entire Richmond region. And I could go on and on about Reverend Gray's good work and the impact that he has had, but I would submit to you that his greatest accomplishment and his greatest love is for that of his family, his wife Diane, and their three children, Tiffany, Todd, and Sean, and so it would be my hope that we would all extend a warm House welcome to Reverend Gray from Fifth Street Baptist.
Welcome, Reverend Gray, and thank you so much for being with us today in your inspirational invocation. Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Converse Fowler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Converse Fowler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I spent this morning with employees, family members, and family members of the Virginia Beach mass shooting. I have listened to their stories through tears of their loved ones, the ones that have to continue on without their wives, husbands, fathers, sisters, brothers, friends, and mothers. They have come to Richmond to share their stories, to speak with legislators from across the state about the tragedy and their want for an independent commission by the state. I want to thank all the legislators that took time out of their mornings to stop by and support those who have come to Richmond. It means the world to these families to have our support, and more importantly, to have our ear. Please continue to keep them in our thoughts and your prayers, and please give them a
Thank you, Delegate Converse Fowler, and welcome to all of the visitors, and it's an honor and privilege for me to have the opportunity to meet with you earlier, and I know I speak on behalf of all of us. Our thoughts, our prayers, our strength, we're sending to you, and we look forward to moving forward and helping you as we move forward. Thank you for being here, and know that we're listening. Delegate from Chesterfield, Delegate Koiner.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Koiner, you have the floor.
In the gallery today is the Delta Kappa Gamma Society International. This society is a professional honorary society of women educators. Established in 1929, Delta Kappa Gamma has attained major objectives and improving opportunities for qualified women employed at every level of education and in promoting excellence in education through scholarships, grants, and legislative advocacy for public education. They are 2,000 members strong in the Commonwealth of Virginia and 70,000 members strong internationally. With members present from, they are standing, ladies, thank you for standing, you'll see the Virginia State Organization of Delta Kappa Gamma is here with us. I ask that the House of Delegates please give these dedicated society members a warm
Welcome to the Women, Delta Kappa Gamma. Thanks for being here and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Sickles, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House. I'd like to introduce and welcome some representatives from the 60-person group from the Ark of Northern Virginia. If they're in the gallery today, I hope they'll stand. They represent people with developmental disabilities and their loved ones all over Northern Virginia. They're here working to ensure people with developmental disabilities get critical supports to live in their communities, like the Community Living or the Family and Individual Supports Waiver, otherwise known as ID and DD waivers, and to make sure those waivers are paying enough so that they can hire and keep staff. The Ark of Northern Virginia is also here working on supported decision-making, protecting people with disabilities in the justice system, and furthering employment opportunities for people with disabilities. I hope you can give them a warm House welcome, and if they're in the gallery, please stand. It's hard to see from here.
Welcome to all those visiting from Northern Virginia, specifically the Ark of Northern Virginia. Thank you for being here and for sharing your stories and for advocating. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Delegate from Baton Rouge, Delegate Austin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Austin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today I speak on behalf of delegates Poindexter, Rasool, Head, and myself. Madam Speaker, we have members in the House today visiting us from the Capitol, visiting their Capitol from Roanoke Valley Realtors Association. If they're in the gallery, I would ask that they rise, and there they are. The Roanoke Valley Realtors Association represents over 1,300 real estate professionals in the region. As a Realtor, each person holds him or herself to a higher professional standard in accordance with the nationally recognized Code of Ethics. Local Realtors are ambassadors for their community, representing buyers, sellers, landlords, and tenants. Realtors support a vibrant community through initiatives promoting economic development, fair housing, affordable housing, and helping Virginians achieve the dream of homeownership. I would ask that you give the Roanoke Valley Realtors Association a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the Roanoke Valley Realtors, and thank you for being here today. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for the purpose of two introductions.
Delegate Lindsey, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, today in the gallery, we have members of the Community Coalition of Virginia, a nonprofit statewide coalition established in 2008. The Community Coalition of Virginia works across all sectors to prevent and reduce substance abuse and related risk factors. Community Coalition of Virginia serves 37 community coalitions throughout Virginia, plus seven state departments, three agencies, and four individuals. Members include parents, youth-serving organizations, prevention specialists, law enforcement, recovery treatment specialists, business and educators, and faith-based members of the community. The Community Coalition of Virginia works diligently to use data-driven, evidence-based strategies to address the substance abuse of opiates, heroin, marijuana, CBD, alcohol, and nicotine vaporing products. Madam Speaker, I hope it will be the pleasure of this body to give this organization a
Welcome to the Community Coalition of Virginia. Thank you for what you do, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Delegate Lindsey.
Now, Madam Speaker, for my second announcement, which is no less significant in scope, today visiting the Capitol, we take part in the legislative process and advocate for strengthening workers' compensation benefits for Virginia's firefighters who develop cancer, we have members from the Norfolk Fire and Rescue Squad. Captain David Hughes passed away on August 14th from occupational cancer. His loss is felt daily by his family and members of his department. I want to thank Captain Hughes for over 27 years of service to the city of Norfolk, and I want to thank his family for the sacrifice that they make whenever you're married or coupled with a public servant. I hope it will be the pleasure of this body to give the representatives from the Norfolk firefighters, including the surviving spouse of Captain David Hughes, Noma Hughes, a warm
Welcome to the first responders and the survivors. Know that we're sending you strength. Thank you for being here, for what you're doing, especially normal. Delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Rasool, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, I would like to introduce members of the Health Market VA Coalition, if they can please rise. This is a big group of individuals who make up patients, survivors, physicians, and families working with 16 national and Virginia-based organizations to ensure that every Virginian has access to affordable and adequate health insurance when they need it. These advocates and neighbors have traveled all across the Commonwealth to meet with their legislators and come here to Richmond today to advocate on behalf of many bills that they are passionate about. They are sharing stories and want us to understand why it's important for us to have access to high-quality and affordable health insurance. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to give them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the Health Market Virginia Coalition. Thank you for what you all are doing, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Price, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. It's shipbuilding day here at the Capitol, and we have with us representatives from Newport News Shipbuilding, and I ask that they please stand. Newport News Shipbuilding is the largest military company in the United States and largest industrial employer in Virginia. It spans 550 acres in the beautiful 95th District, and they are the sole designer, builder, and refueller of U.S. Navy carriers and one of two providers of U.S. Navy submarines. They have been aggressively hiring for the past two years to prepare for the increased workload demand, and to date, they have filled over 11,000 positions and continue to seek talented, hard-working individuals, so please spread that word. They have a major focus on workforce training and development, including partnerships with local community colleges and CTE programs and local public schools. Their focus is on career awareness, career readiness, and STEM promotion, and to that end, Newport News Shipbuilding has entered a new innovative partnership with Old Dominion University and the city of Newport News to open the Brooks Crossing Innovation and Opportunities Center in the southeast community of Newport News. Here's a little fun fact, Madam Speaker. On this day in 1886, this body approved the shipyard charter, which provided authorization to acquire land, build a draw dock, and build ships of all dimensions. So to celebrate their hard work and the hard work of shipbuilders, I would like to invite everyone on Capitol Square to visit the digital shipbuilding trailer on Bank Street. You will have a hands-on opportunity to learn about transformational technologies being used at the shipyard, including a welding simulator, augmented reality, laser scanning, and additive manufacturing. So as we thank our guests here today from Newport News Shipbuilding for visiting today, I hope that we will give them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the Newport News Shipbuilding. Thank you so much for being here, thank you for what you do for the Commonwealth, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The House will be at ease.[1619.55] The House will be at ease. The House shall come to order. Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on personal pressing business on a granted leave from today's session. Delegate from Rockbridge, Delegate Campbell. The Clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Second morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of member requests to move legislation from any uncontested calendar to regular calendar. Page 11 of the calendar, House Bill 62 will be moved -- sorry. Page 21 of the calendar, House Bill 390 will be moved to the regular calendar. Madam Speaker, those are the moves I'm aware of.
Delegate from Powhatan, Delegate Ware.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction, and I recognize we're past that time, but I didn't get keyed in until afterwards.
Delegate Ware, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today with us, visiting the Capitol, are members of the Powhatan Leadership Institute, and I would ask them to rise if they are in the gallery. We had a chance, both Senator Hashmi and myself, to speak with this group. They have been keenly interested in their community, and that's the reason for their being here. One of Alexis de Tocqueville's key observations in his Democracy in America is that Americans exhibit remarkably robust institutions and instincts for a civil society: strong neighborhoods, communities, churches, clubs, and so on, and this strength provides vital support for the health of a democratic polity. By their engagement with PLI, this group has signaled their commitment to continuing and becoming pillars of our community. I would ask my fellow House members to give them a cordial House welcome.
Welcome to the Powhatan Leadership Institute, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The Clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Third morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement for requests by members to move for legislation to go by for the day and the subsequent motion by the Majority Leader. Page 11 of the calendar, House Bill 62, by for the day. Page 18 of the calendar, House Bill 1530, by for the day. Page 21 of the calendar, House Bill 390, by for the day. Page 28 of the calendar, House Bill 983, by for the day. Page 29 of the calendar, House Bill 371, by for the day. Page 30 of the calendar, House Bill 1394, by for the day. Page 33 of the calendar, House Bill 630, by for the day. Page 34, House Bill 789, by for the day. Page 34, House Bill 949, by for the day. That completes the byes for the day I'm aware of.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I knew that the previously reported legislation go by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that legislation as announced by the Clerk go by for the day. As many as favor the motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. The Clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Fourth morning hour order of business. The next order of business is recognition of member requests for points of personal privilege. Please use your request to speak buttons to be recognized.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Jones, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members of the House. Two years ago, I rose on this floor to deliver my installment of the Virginia Legislative Black Caucus's annual Moments in Black History. I chose a topic that resonated with me and my district, and that was the Norfolk 17. I read each one of their names aloud that day. And for those of you who don't recall, the Norfolk 17 were the first group of Black students to desegregate the public school system back in 1959, in the wake of Brown versus Board of Education, drawn-out legal battles, and massive resistance. Indeed, their legacy looms large in Norfolk, and I've tried to do my part to amplify their story beyond our area, because it plays such a significant role in Virginia, but also ties into this country's challenging history on race. Colleagues, last week, we lost another one of the venerable 17. Louis L. Cousins passed away at the age of 76 in San Antonio, Texas. If you don't know his name, you might be more familiar with the picture featuring Mr. Cousins, which became both iconic and emblematic of the times. And if you haven't seen that photo, I urge you to Google it, because I shall briefly tell the accompanying story. At age 15, Cousins walked into Maury High School as the first Black to desegregate that institution. His initial stop that day was the auditorium. There, the local newspaper captured the photo of Cousins seated all the way in the front row, head held high, probably both defiant and terrified of the bold choice he made to walk this path. Because of his presence in the front of the room, his white classmates assembled in the back and along the sidewall, staying as far away from him as possible. Cousins sat there as a stoic pioneer and a solitary warrior, but his strength filled Blacks around Virginia with hope that if a 15-year-old could endure, so too could they. His journey would be lonely, and undoubtedly, it was solitudinous. His classmates ostracized and ignored him, baited him to fight, and even spat on him, and a cross burned in his front yard. Mr. Cousins was keenly aware of how much his role in the struggle meant. He'd say, "Don't you ever tell anybody that I integrated that school," instead he'd say, "I desegregated that school." And after finishing at Maury, Cousins went to the Air Force, which led him to San Antonio with his child sweetheart, Dolores. And they started a family there, and Cousins lived his life trying to square his experience as an adolescent while making his way through this often complicated world. He returned to Virginia on occasion to commemorate his part in the Norfolk 17. Today, we remember and are grateful for Louis Cousins' contributions to Virginia's march towards justice. But sadly, with the passing of Mr. Cousins, only nine of the 17 remain. And while only 61 years removed from segregation, many in Virginia have no idea who these steady warriors are or how large their place in Virginia's history should be. And with each passing day, we risk losing those who were in the room when it happened, which I submit to you all today will be tantamount to losing part of ourselves. We would be well-served to appreciate the giants that still walk among us, who can tell the stories before they move on to the next life. And while the Norfolk 17 are quiet, self-effacing heroes who don't seek the spotlight regarding their place in history, it is on us to make sure that subsequent generations are aware of their bravery and sacrifice, especially the millions of students who pass through Virginia public school doors over the years because of Cousins and his peers. We can achieve this in many, many ways, including embedding this history in our school curriculums, within our community groups, and in the discourse of our own homes. Madam Speaker, that flame of justice that the Norfolk 17 and their fellow heroes ignited still burns to this day. It must be our cause and mission to ensure that we highlight, honor, and pay tribute to these courageous men and women over and over and over again, and have no shame about shouting it from the rooftops, so that flame will never extinguish. And I pray that we continue to stoke the flame of justice by sharing these stories so that it burns brightly into perpetuity, generations after the 17 no longer walk among us. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall return for their first morning hour order of business, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members of the House. Could I be joined in the center aisle by Delegates Mullin, Simon, Lopez, Krezak, Murphy, Herring, Born, Bell, Weber, Campbell, and McGuire? And Tran? Today, I have the honor of presenting the Speaker's Resolution, HR 165, committing our great baseball team in Washington, D.C. As you know, the ballpark is in the District, but very accessible to Virginians via metro or by automobile or by bicycle. 60% of those seats in the Nationals ballpark are filled by Virginians, 60%. With us today are the President of Baseball Operations, General Manager, Mike Rizzo, Vice President of Communications, Jennifer Mastin Gilio, and her son, her son Carter, and Tawana West, the Manager of Public Safety and Security, who just told me that the Virginians were the politest people that came to the ballpark. So this is not that long a resolution. It's got great facts in here. Most of you probably know these things, but I'm going to read a good bit of it. Sorry. You know, we won the World Series. Defeating the Houston Astros in seven games, the last time a Major League Baseball team from Washington, D.C. won a World Series was nearly a century ago, following years without baseball in the nation's capital, multiple hundred lost seasons, and a series of painful playoff defeats, starting in 2012. The victory was a long-awaited opportunity for fans in the Capitol and the region and throughout the Commonwealth to rejoice. So the Washington Nationals motto, Madam Speaker, was "Stay in the Fight." After starting the year, everybody knows this, was a disappointing 19-31 record. The team nonetheless finished the regular season with 93 wins, earning a playoff berth and starting its march to the World Series. In October, the team became the only second club in Major League Baseball history to win it all after being 12 games below .500. That's worth a clap, I think. The relentless spirit that lifted the team into the playoffs carried them to the very end, with the Washington Nationals posting five come-from-behind wins in elimination games in the 2019 season, including, of course, the astounding seventh-inning comeback in Game Seven in the World Series in that town in the South that's so hot. Whereas, as a testament to the improbable historical nature of this season, the Washington Nationals became the only club in National League Baseball history to win three winner-take-all games in the same postseason, and to win every game of a seven-game series on the road. And accomplishment was highlighted by dominant pitching from the Big Four: Patrick Corbin, Annabel Sanchez, Max Scherzer, Kathleen's neighbor, and Stephen Strasburg, and clutch hitting from Adam Eaton, Howie Kendrick, Anthony Rendon, and Juan Soto. So the Commonwealth was well-represented in the Washington Nationals World Series, with outstanding contributions from University of Alumni, both Sean Doolittle and Ryan Zimmerman, and Old Dominion University alumnus Daniel Hudson. How about that? Bet you didn't know that. So the Nationals will not only be remembered for their caliber of play, but for the much-appreciated levity they brought to the game through their on-field rituals, celebrations, home run dugout dances, and baby shark sing-alongs. Paul Krezak told me he would show you how the baby shark is done now. Where's Paul? The Washington Nationals demonstrated to young players all over the world what can be accomplished through grit and determination, and gave fans a moment they will cherish for the rest of their lives. So therefore, now be resolved that the House of Delegates and Senate concurring, that the General Assembly hereby commend the Washington Nationals 2019 World Series Champions.
Thank you so much, Mike Rizzo, and Jennifer Mastin Gilio, and Carter, and Tawana West of the World Series Champion Washington Nationals for joining us here today on the floor and in the Capitol, and bringing with you that some real fancy hardware there. This fall, this fall, this fall, the Nationals showed us what it means to never give up and to always stay in the fight. And the 2019 Washington Nationals made so many throughout the Commonwealth so joyful and so incredibly proud. So we thank you. You truly are Virginians' champions, and thank you for being us. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The Clerk shall call the calendar.
Calendar for the Virginia House of Delegates for January 28th. House Bill's on third reading, uncontested calendar. House Bill 60, House Bill 136, House Bill 137, House Bill 259, House Bill 270, House Bill 277, House Bill 278, House Bill 388, House Bill 402, House Bill 436, House Bill 536, House Bill 639, House Bill 651, House Bill 663, House Bill 724, House Bill 792, House Bill 834, House Bill 839, House Bill 882, House Bill 1022, House Bill 1070, House Bill 1346, House Bill 1378, House Bill 1380, House Bill 1500, House Bill 1501.
The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 97, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 97, nays zero, abstention zero. The bills pass.
House Bill's on third reading, regular calendar. House Bill 5, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 10.1408 and 10.1410.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to Clinch State Scenic River.
The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 85, nays 11, abstentions zero.
Ayes 85, nays 11, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 61, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 16.1284 of the Code of Virginia relating to adults sentenced for juvenile offenses, good conduct credit.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 94, nays four, abstentions zero.
Ayes 94, nays four, abstention zero. The bill passes.
Page 11, House Bill 62, has gone by for the day. House Bill 173, a bill to prohibit licensing of duck blinds in certain areas.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 16, nays 36, abstentions one.
Ayes 16, nays 36, abstentions one. The bill passes.
House Bill 275, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 16.169.6:1 of the Code of Virginia relating to the maximum number of judges in each judicial district.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 87, nays 11, abstentions zero.
Ayes 87, nays 11, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 276, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 528.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to Virginia State Police reporting hate crimes.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 61, nays 37, abstentions zero.
Ayes 61, nays 37, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 305, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 17.1275 and 64.2409 of the Code of Virginia relating to Circuit Court Clerk's Fee Lodging of Wills.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 79, nays 20, abstentions zero.
Ayes 79, nays 20, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 306, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 17.1275 of the Code of Virginia relating to fees collected by Circuit Court Clerks for recording and indexing. Use of fee in preserving permanent records of the Circuit fee in preserving permanent records of the Circuit Courts.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 82, nays 16, abstentions zero.
Ayes 82, nays 16, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 341, a bill to amend and reenact Section 58.1-3 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Department of Taxation sharing information with the Department of Social Services.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 58, nays 40, abstentions zero.
Ayes 58, nays 40, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 504, a bill to amend and reenact Section 62.144.15:72 of the Code of Virginia relating to Chesapeake Bay Preservation Areas Mature Trees.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 69, nays 30, abstentions zero.
Ayes 69, nays 30, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 520, a bill to direct the Department of Environmental Quality to study tree planting as a landcover type and stormwater best management practice.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 82, nays 17, abstentions zero.
Ayes 82, nays 17, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 535, a bill to amend and reenact Section 58.13970.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to real estate with delinquent taxes or liens, sales by nonprofit organizations.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 82, nays 17, abstentions zero.
Ayes 82, nays 17, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 537, a bill to amend and reenact Section 58.13219.4 of the Code of Virginia relating to real estate tax exemption for property in redevelopment or conservation areas or rehabilitation districts.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 55, nays 42, abstentions zero.
Ayes 55, nays 42, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 730, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding an Article IV of Chapter III of Title 58.1, a section numbered 58.1356 relating to reporting of payments by third-party settlement organizations.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 58, nays 40, abstentions zero.
Ayes 58, nays 40, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 886, a bill to amend and reenact Section 10.1204.1 of the Code of Virginia and to repeal the Second Enactment Clause of Chapter 461 of the Acts of Assembly of 2015 relating to the State Trails Advisory Committee sunset.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 91, nays seven, abstentions zero.
Ayes 91, nays seven, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 980, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 16.1 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to provision of abortion.
Shall the bill pass?
Madam Chair, Madam Speaker?
Yes. Delegate from Westmoreland, Delegate Ranson.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to speak to the bill.
Delegate Ranson, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I rise to speak on House Bill 980. Madam Speaker, Members of the body, we are about to vote on an important measure related to life. Madam Speaker, like many women, we look forward to the day when we can plan on our future, hoping for a healthy child. I have friends that are not able to have children and are waiting lists as adoptive parents. I have friends that have gone through numerous miscarriages and kept trying. I have friends that went to clinics as young teens and thankfully changed their minds and had that beautiful baby at a very young age as a teenager. Last Wednesday, when this bill quickly flew out of Courts Committee repealing the 24-hour wait period, eliminating critical safety regulations, repealing important education documents, repealing the ultrasound so the mother can hear that heartbeat and see the baby, I was not surprised. However, I was very overwhelmed with concerns for those women that do not have a support group, young girls and women that do not have counsel, or close friendships, or family to turn to. Madam Speaker, in this body, we all come from very different backgrounds and family structures. I understand that. However, we understand the importance of being surrounded with good friendships, good health care, we know the right questions to ask, and we also know we want to provide that for our children as well. Madam Speaker, my colleagues, there were 16,070 abortions performed in 2018. I'm sorry I don't have the current numbers for 2019 in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Whether you have a chemical abortion or medical abortion, the patient, the mother, the young woman, sometimes alone and desperate, deserves information. She deserves to understand what is going to happen to her body if she is eight to 10 weeks and receives the chemical abortion. That's the pill. This is the information I received from a clinic site. This is shallow. I found this on the website, but here it is. Quote, "You will have a lot of bleeding with clumps of tissue and cramping, so plan ahead. Have someone with you that you trust. Stock up on books, movies, food, and maxi pads. It makes the process more comfortable for you. You can take a shower, sit on the toilet." What they call clumps, my friends, of tissue is the fetus, because at eight to 10 weeks, the legs, the fingers, the toes, the lips, a nose, eyes, eyelids, and by 10 weeks, the baby is bending their elbows. If you choose the medical procedure or the suction abortion at 14 to 16 weeks, that same site says it should be extremely effective for you. They will simply empty your uterus. The baby at this point is moving his or her arms and legs inside the mom, and the face is fully developed. Members, by 18 weeks now, doctors can treat an unborn baby for conditions inside of the womb, and in the near future, the age will decrease as science and medicine continues to be on the side of life, not death. Members, due to a medical condition, having children was never a promise for me. I remember my first pregnancy because it was high-risk, but we were able to carry that baby full-term, and everything was fine. By the way, today is her 18th birthday. She's so beautiful. My second pregnancy was also high-risk. At 20 weeks, we were told our baby had trisomy, and from there, we had to make a decision. Do we continue the pregnancy? It was 2005. The likelihood was the baby would be stillborn or live maybe just a few hours. Well, I fought with my husband. We have this beautiful daughter that God blessed us with, and I'm very grateful for our daughter, but I know that God would not put more on me than I could bear. But I continued my pregnancy with two amnios, weekly ultrasound procedures, and they continued to show my husband and I that something was wrong with our baby. From the stress of all that, I had a seizure at six months while carrying this child that something was wrong with. I told the doctors, and they kept telling me, "Your baby is not going to survive." But I kept carrying that baby. The baby and I both had a purpose. That baby wanted to live, and I wanted that baby to live. The baby was born on November 9th of 2005, healthy, beautiful, strong, amazing, and today, he is 14, and he's still strong, healthy, and amazing. Madam Speaker, there are many of us that want to fight for life and for mercy, and I ask this body to vote no on this bill and these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Byron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, since we gavelled into order 21 days ago, our colleagues across the aisle have made women a central focus. Perhaps the central focus of this year's session, this House elected its first woman Speaker and its first woman clerk, and the majority caucus chose a woman to be their floor leader. Then, a few days later, this House voted to ratify an amendment to the United States Constitution that proponents claim will guarantee equal rights for women, even though that amendment is no longer pending before the states. That action, as well as yesterday's approval of the companion resolution from the body in the Capitol's West Wing, was met with raucous cheers from a gallery filled with women who share the majority's views. Today, we are moving beyond milestones and symbolic gestures. Today, by its action on this bill, we will learn what this House really thinks about women and their rights. Do we believe women have a right and are entitled to complete and comprehensive information before they consent to a life-altering and for a child, life-ending surgery? When women are contemplating that decision, do we believe they have a right and should be entitled to see the results of every medically necessary test performed on them in preparation for that surgery? Do we believe women have a right and are entitled to have a physician, not an assistant or a nurse, perform that surgery? Do we believe women should have the right to have a procedure as sensitive and as serious as this be performed in a facility that meets accepted medical safety standards like other surgeries do? This legislation would obliterate all of those safeguards for women. It establishes standards so lax, so casual, that anyone, at any time, almost anywhere, can have an abortion performed by just about anybody. We frequently hear from the other side of the aisle that they trust women. If those who supported this legislation truly trusted women, they wouldn't subject them to a serious medical procedure without being allowed to see the test results, performed in a medically substandard facility by someone other than a doctor. That isn't trusting women. That's a recipe for abusing them. Some of you have daughters, or even granddaughters, that maybe someday be in a situation that brings them to this decision. Don't you want them to have all the information available before they make that decision? What about the unborn little girl's rights that might be growing in that womb? When does she get the most fundamental right to life, referenced in our Declaration of Independence and established in our Constitution? If you care about the safety of women, if you're truly committed to their equality, if you believe they're entitled to the same protections under the law as men, don't deny them the standard of care to which they're entitled. I urge my colleagues to vote no on this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise to speak to the bill.
Delegate Hope, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Members of the body, today I rise to urge my colleagues to support House Bill 980. I appreciate the personal stories. This issue's personal for me too, because I have three young daughters, and I want them and every single other Virginian to grow up and live in a Commonwealth where we no longer have to debate and discuss their rights on this House floor. Instead, I want them to be the ones that make their own personal reproductive health care decisions, not us or this body. I want them to be the decision-makers when it comes to being in control of their own destinies, not us. I want Virginians to look back on this day and know that in the year 2020, when Virginia legislators finally had a chance to do what's right, when it came to rolling back the medically unnecessary restrictions on their health care, let's be very clear, these are medically unnecessary, put in place by anti-choice legislators that we did the right thing. I want them to know that in 2020, the Commonwealth decided to put them first and become a place that no longer disrespects and belittles their autonomy, but instead voted to trust women to make their own personal health care decisions. Leading medical organizations such as the American Medical Association, the American Public Health Association, all agree on this point. They know that the mandatory 24-hour waiting periods, the forced medically unnecessary ultrasounds, and the state-based mandatory bias counseling are not based on medical practice and science. They do not serve the best interests of patients when it comes to their health and their safety. Instead, these restrictions are only aimed to limit a woman's ability to access safe and legal abortion care, and it's time to finally roll back these outdated laws that are not based on health and they're not based on safety. Let's make 2020 the year, Madam Speaker, that the Commonwealth of Virginia finally listen to the majority of Virginians, and let's vote to respect their rights right now by passing House Bill 980. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill pass?
The Clerk shall close the roll. Ayes 52, nays 45, abstentions zero.
Ayes 52, nays 45, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 999, a bill to amend and reenact Section 22.1274.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to school board policies, epinephrine accessibility.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 97, nays one, abstentions zero.
Ayes 97, nays one, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 1071, a bill to amend and reenact-
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Having voted on the prevailing side whereby the House Bill 99-
Having voted on the prevailing side whereby the House Bill 999, my bill, passed by a 97 to 1 margin, with the one being my seatmate and roommate, I would ask that we reconsider the vote so that he can get his answer right. Thank you.
The delegate requests HB 999 be reconsidered. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
HB 999 will be reconsidered. Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 98, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 98, nays zero, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1071, a bill to amend and reenact Section 18.2388 of the Code of Virginia relating to profane swearing in public.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Yes, Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, having voted on the prevailing side by which this body engrossed House Bill 1071, I move that we now reconsider that vote.
Delegate Simon requests that we reconsider HB 1071. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? HB 1071 shall be reconsidered.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take this bill by for the day.
Delegate Simon moves that we take by for the day, HB 1071. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? 1071 will go by for the day.
House Bill 1073, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 22.1273.3 relating to parental educational information, tobacco and nicotine vapor products.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 62, nays 36, abstentions zero.
Ayes 62, nays 36, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1272, a bill to amend and reenact Section 29.1302.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to senior resident lifetime license for hunting bear, deer, and turkey.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 96, nays three, abstentions zero.
Ayes 96, nays three, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1413, a bill to amend and reenact Section 58.1301 of the Code of Virginia relating to conformity of the Commonwealth's taxation system with the Internal Revenue Code.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 95, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 95, nays zero, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1490, a bill to repeal Sections 20-45.2 and 2045.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to same-sex marriages, civil unions.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 63, nays 34, abstentions zero.
Ayes 63, nays 34, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1530 on page 18 has gone by for the day. House Bill 1598, a bill to amend and reenact Section 10.1413 of the Code of Virginia relating to James State Scenic River.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 88, nays nine, abstentions zero.
Ayes 88, nays nine, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1601, a bill to amend and reenact Section 10.1418 of the Code of Virginia relating to Stanton State Scenic River.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 88, nays nine, abstentions zero.
Ayes 88, nays nine, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1612, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 10.1411.5 relating to scenic rivers, Gray's Creek in Surrey County.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 90, nays eight, abstentions zero.
Ayes 90, nays eight, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 653, a bill to amend and reenact Section 28.2807 of the Code of Virginia relating to condemned growing beds, electronic maps.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 99, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 99, nays zero, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House bills on second reading uncontested calendar. House Bill 155, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 6.21047 and 6.21059 of the Code of Virginia relating to banks, trust subsidiaries, reported from labor and commerce.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Madam Speaker, could that bill go by temporarily?
Yes, I was thinking the same thing.
House Bill 155 will go by temporarily. House Bill 211, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by-
Delegate Boliva requests that HB 155 go by temporarily. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? HB 155 goes by temporarily.
House Bill 211, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 46.2745.3 relating to special license plate, air medal, reported from transportation.
The Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Hurst, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, a constituent in the town of Blacksburg came to me this past fall with a letter saying that he had been awarded a United States Air Medal and would like to properly display how proud he is of receiving such air medal with a specialty license plate, but could not do so because the Commonwealth currently doesn't have one. So, House Bill 211, upon application and written evidence that the applicant has been awarded the United States Air Medal, and there are thousands of veterans in Virginia who have air medals, that the Commissioner of the DMV shall give a special license plate to them and to unremarried surviving spouses of such persons. You know, you may think about the necessity of this bill, but we do have lots of specialty military medal license plates for things like the Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, the Distinguished Flying Cross, the Legion of Merit, the Silver Star, et cetera, but not for the United States Air Medal. And because we didn't vote on making swearing in public legal yet, I'm just going to say, dang nabbit, Madam Speaker, we should have the United States Air Medal special at a license plate. So I hope it be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Can we have some quiet, please?
House Bill 313, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.23705.7 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, library records, reported from General Laws.
Delegate from Clark, Delegate Goditis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, HB 313 simply modernizes the current library record exclusion in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. It protects the privacy of library patrons who have accessed online library materials to this point. Current law limits this protection solely to physical materials. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 21 of the calendar, House Bill 390 has been moved to the regular calendar. House Bill 404, a bill to amend and reenact Section 42.146 of the Code of Virginia relating to public libraries, reported from General Laws.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If you're like me, and you spend a lot of time at the public libraries in your neighborhoods, you know that the library is more than just an educational facility. It's a place where a lot of people gather, especially up in Northern Virginia. It's a place where a lot of kids come to do their homework. We also have a lot of folks that don't speak English well, who come and get tutoring and SAT programs and suchlike. And the reason I put this bill in was, as I was thinking about the role of the library in America today, especially in the Commonwealth, it's not just a place where we have public education. And I learned, because of the fact that we're in Northern Virginia, we learned that the FEMA, the federal agency, and others have actually started designating libraries among many places in the community as an essential service place where you can store emergency shelter, information, emergency aid. And so we thought that if libraries are so essential to many parts of our lives beyond public education, we should reflect that accurately in the policy. And it turns out that the policy of Virginia already says it is declared to be the policy of Commonwealth as part of the provision of public education that libraries shall be established. So I just simply add the words "essential service" to that policy to state what is obvious, in fact, now, that libraries are, in fact, essential services. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 411, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article 1 of Chapter 2 of Title 46.2, a section numbered 46.2221.5 relating to Department of Motor Vehicles Information for Veterans, reported from Transportation with Substitute.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Delaney.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The substitute is agreed to. Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 411 is a bill to amend the Code of Virginia to offer information on veteran services available to the Commonwealth, to any person who identifies themselves as a veteran on a document submitted to the Department of Motor Vehicles. Virginia is proud to be the home of so many who've served to protect our nation. This bill recognizes their service to our nation and aims to inform them that the Commonwealth is proud to call them residents and notify them of services and programs available offered here in Virginia. I hope it is the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 445, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.21004 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to light units, candle power, to lumens, reported from Transportation with Substitute.
The Illuminating, Delegate from Chesterfield, Delegate Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The substitute is agreed to. Delegate Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So last year, when I was working on a bill for the motorcyclists and that lights, when I was going through the code, everything was written in candle power, and candle power is an obsolete term, and so we wanted to switch it over to lumens. But if you look at the bill, you'll also notice that candle power is still in the code as a request of the state police and related to antique cars and antique lights. So I do hope the body will engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 446, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.21124 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Department of General Services, disposition of surplus materials, donation of surplus computers, United States military, reported from General Laws with amendments.
The Delegate from Enrico, Delegate McGuire.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move committee amendments.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The amendments are agreed to. Delegate McGuire.
Madam Speaker, and members of the House, this bill, House Bill 446, would allow Department of General Services to donate computers and other related equipments to nonprofits, 5013s, for the purposes of refurbishing them and helping veterans get jobs. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to the third reading.
House Bill 510, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.23705.4 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, public institutions of higher education, information related to pledges and donations, reported from General Laws with Amendment.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee amendment.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The amendment is agreed to. Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and ladies and gentlemen of the House. House Bill 510 is a recommendation of the FOIA Council. It's one of two bills that address the discovery of problematic donor gift agreements at George Mason University. While George Mason University, they conducted a thorough review of its own policies after the incident, it did give us a chance to look under the hood at some of our FOIA laws to see if they needed to be tightened. What the bill does, it clarifies language regarding what university documents are available through FOIA, but I think most importantly, it provides that a donor may not be anonymous if the gift agreement directs academic decision-making. And I appreciate very much the university's working with me on this bill and would move that we engross it and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 544, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.21110 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Department of General Services, public posting of contract information on central electronic procurement system, reported from General Laws with Substitute.
The Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The substitute is agreed to. Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 544 brings greater transparency to state government contracting in Virginia through the posting of awarded contracts to the Commonwealth's e-procurement system, EVA. Posting of awarded contracts will be required for any agency that is already required to post notices, RFPs, and IFBs to EVA. It will be optional for any other public body that uses or may wish to use EVA, including local government and local school systems. Currently, all documents related to an RFP or IFB are available for agencies that are required to use EVA. Yet, once the required notice of award or notice of intent to award is posted, no further information related to the procurement is posted, such as the awarded contract or modifications that are later made to the contract. This means an awarded contract is available through a FOIA request made to the applicable agency. Since this is public information, it is logical that they be made available in the same manner as other procurement documents. I move that the House engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 548, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.23705.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Exclusions, Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, Records of Active Investigations, reported from General Laws.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 548 amends the Virginia Freedom of Information Act to add exclusions for records of active investigation being conducted by the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. Under the current version of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services are obligated to comply with FOIA act requests with a high-rise and high-profile incidence that prompt the attention of the department, such as allegations of abuse, neglect, death, and compliance with the rules and regulations for licensing providers. It has left the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services with limited options since they are not exempt from the Freedom of Information Act regulations during an active investigation. This means that during ongoing investigations, the release of documents could lead to the impediment of the investigation. The solution is explained in House Bill 548 by providing the department with a Freedom of Information Act exemption to prevent those being investigated from finding out what information has been provided by a witness during the investigation. I hope it is the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 593, a bill to authorize the issuance of special license plate for supporters of the Richmond Animal Care and Control Foundation, burying the legend Team Tommy. Fees, reported from Transportation.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, almost one year ago, many of us read in the newspaper the horrific tragedy that occurred not too far from here, where a dog was tied to a fence, doused with accelerant, and set on fire. His name was Tommy. Over the last several months, I've been working with Richmond Animal Care and Control to yet again honor Tommy and the tragedy that he saw and felt and experienced. And so this license plate would honor him as Team Tommy. And as I was in the subcommittee presenting, it was asked if I had a picture, and so here it is. I'm happy to show it to you, but it would be my hope that we could engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 595, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 46.21549.2 relating to dealers' license plate and special license plate combination, reported from Transportation with Amendment.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Madam Speaker, I'd move the committee amendments.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The amendments are agreed to. Delegate Born.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill. Madam Speaker, and ladies and gentlemen of the House, this is another sort of license plate bill. Right now, auto dealers across Virginia may want to get a specialty license plate that would bear-
would bear the emblem or motto of any number of causes or fanbases that we might have. So it might be the College of William &amp; Mary, it might be the UVA National Championship license plate, but they can't do that and have their dealer tags. And so this bill just grants them the authority to, and the ability to have those specialty license plates that are their dealer tags. And it would be my hope that the body could engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 722, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.23705.6 of the Code of Virginia relating to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Exclusions, proprietary records and trade secrets, affordable housing loan applications, reported from general laws.
The delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Reed.
Madam Speaker, thank you. House Bill 722 excludes from mandatory disclosure financial and proprietary records submitted with loan applications for affordable housing developments when the release of the records would impact the competitive position of the applicant. I move that it be the will of the body to engross this and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 813, a bill to amend and reenact Section 6.21352 of the Code of Virginia relating to credit unions' compensation of directors, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 813 simply allows for compensation of not more than $6,000 a year for credit union board members for the commission of some of their duties. I ask that, did I move the substitute? I'm sorry, I need to move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Ward.
Thank you. I think you heard the explanation of the bill. So now I ask that the House would move this piece of legislation on to have it engrossed and move it on to its third reading. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
House Bill 989, a bill to amend and reenact Section 46.2633.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to designation of beneficiary on motor vehicle title, multiple owners, reported from transportation.
Delegate from James City County, Delegate Patton.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Patton.
House Bill 989 allows multiple co-owners of a vehicle to designate a beneficiary on a motor vehicle title. Current law allows a beneficiary to be designated only if there is just one owner. The bill requires the consent of all owners and provides that the transfer of ownership will occur on the death of the last arriving owner. I hope it will be the pleasure of this body to engross the bill and move it to the third reading.
House Bill 1011.
It's very hard to hear. If everybody can go in the back room if you have conversations, otherwise, please be quiet and sit on the floor. Delegate, clerk.
House Bill 1011, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.23104.02 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to Virginia Conflict of Interest and Ethics Advisory Council, powers and duties, guidance, redaction of disclosure forms, reported from general laws.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 1011 comes as a recommendation of the Ethics Council. The bill does two things. It clarifies that the council can give guidance regarding revolving door prohibition to constitutional officers and legislatures, legislators, I'm sorry. Council already has authorized to give guidance from revolving door to state officers and employees. And it will also authorize the council and local clerks to redact email addresses from disclosure forms. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1100, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.2309 and 2.2309.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to the State Inspector General, powers and duties, reported from general laws with substitute.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 1100 would implement several recommendations from a 2019 Jay Lark review of the Office of Inspector General. The intent is to clarify OSIG's role as the state's lead agency to investigate government waste, fraud, and abuse, and provide meaningful oversight of DBHDS facilities. That was the vision when the agency was created eight years ago, but it seems that how things have been implemented has fallen short of the original goals. The substitute passed by the General Laws Committee would allow the Inspector General to refer complaints to the Internal Audit Department of covered institutions under the Restructuring Act and those that qualify as Level III institutions. However, if the complaint concerns the president of an institution, the Internal Audit Department, or if the Inspector General concludes that OSIG should investigate, then the investigation shall be conducted by OSIG. I hope that the House will engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1126, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.21200 and 46.21209 of the Code of Virginia relating to abandoned, unattended, or immobile vehicles, minimum weight, reported from transportation.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Davis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1126 just puts a minimum weight on the definition of motor vehicles with regards to towing, since we have a whole bunch of motor vehicles now that qualify, motorized scooters, motorized skateboards, that sort of thing. So it just puts that minimum 75 pounds on the weight class now. And I hope it's the pleasure of this body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1252, a bill to amend and reenact Section 40.1121 of the Code of Virginia and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 40.1120.1 relating to prohibited discrimination in apprenticeship programs, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
The delegate from Portsmouth, Delegate Scott.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Scott.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill was brought on behalf of the Department of Labor and Industry. The bill prohibits a sponsor of a registered apprenticeship program from discriminating against an apprentice or applicant on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, age, genetic information, or disability. The measure simply conforms to Virginia's apprenticeship nondiscrimination requirements to those required for all state apprenticeship agencies pursuant to the federal Office of Apprenticeship Regulations adopted in 2016. Failure to have this language is a nonconformity issue that could lead to derecognition of Virginia's registered apprenticeship program, and the result would be federal oversight of Virginia's very robust registered apprenticeship program. Madam Speaker, I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Could that bill go to the regular calendar after engrossment?
House Bill 1252 will go to the regular calendar after engrossment. House Bill 1337, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.23115 of the Code of Virginia relating to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interests Act, disclosure by members of the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority and Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, reported from general laws with amendment.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Can I first move the committee technical amendments, please?
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the amendments are agreed to. Delegate Keem.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Members will know that we have a number of governmental organizations that are involved in funding transportation projects. Up in our area, there's a Northern Virginia Transportation Authority and a Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, which is in charge of allocating funding for major projects. And for a number of years, as a tradition, only members who were elected officials, local elected officials, and state legislators served on these bodies. A couple of years ago, we made the change to allow for citizen members to also serve alongside the elected officials. The problem was elected officials, because of their jobs, have to disclose their financial disclosure and conflict of interest, whereas citizen members don't have to do that. We think that's an oversight because citizen members who serve are doing the same work that the legislators are. So this bill would simply require that the citizen members who serve on these boards have, also have to file the disclosure. And so on behalf of former Delegate General Lambunian, I'd ask that we engross and move this bill on to the third reading, please.
House Bill 1339, a bill to amend and reenact Section 13.1514 of the Code of Virginia and to repeal the third enactments of Chapters 354 and 400 of the Acts of Assembly of 2015 relating to the Securities Act, exemption for equity crowdfunding, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Kilgore.
Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 1339 repeals the sunset clause which allowed the State Corporation Commission to adopt a exemption for limiting offerings for startup companies, simply known as equity crowdfunding, and it also adopts some federal regulations that have been adopted by the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission. Hope it's the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1527, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.23132 and 2.23704.3, as it shall become effective of the Code of Virginia relating to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act and Virginia Freedom of Information Act, training requirements, executive directors and members of industrial development authorities and economic development authorities, reported from general laws.
The delegate from Faukeer, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, House Bill 1527 adds EDA directors and the boards to undergo conflict of interest training. This is an effort to add transparency in government. I move the body engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1528, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.23115 of the Code of Virginia relating to State and Local Government Conflict of Interests Act, disclosure by executive directors and members of industrial development authorities and economic development authorities, penalty, reported from general laws.
The delegate from Faukeer, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, 1528 takes that transparency even further and asks those economic development directors and boards to fill out the conflict of interest so that we can see what they do. I engross, I ask the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to their third reading?
House Bill, returning to page 19 of the calendar, House Bill 155 went by temporarily. A bill to amend and reen-
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate Gilbert.
Did we vote on engrossment just now?
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you.
A bill to amend and reenact Sections 6.21047 and 6.21059 of the Code of Virginia relating to banks, trusts, subsidiaries, reported from labor and commerce.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill is a recommendation of the Bureau of Financial Institutions at our SCC. Under Virginia Code, banks, bank holding companies are allowed to transfer trust positions from one bank to another that they wholly own. This measure would create a trust subsidiary under common ownership which would have a similar ability to transfer within the same bank holding company. That's all the bill does, and I hope it's the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
And now, shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to their third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bills are engrossed and passed on to their third reading.
House bills on second reading, regular calendar. Page 16, House Bill 1071 has gone by for the day. Page 28, House Bill 983 has gone by for the day. House Bill, page 29, House Bill 371, by for the day. Page 29, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 3.25120 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to milk, definition, misbranding, reported from agriculture, Chesapeake, and natural resources with substitute.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 119 is a milk bill. This bill defines milk as coming from a hoofed, lactating animal and not a plant. Milk has eight times the nutritional value of plant-based fluids described as milk. This is confusing to people. This is the same description as in the federal regulations and definitions. The federal government just hadn't enforced the rule yet. My bill would not become law until 11 adjoining states pass similar legislation, so the bar for passage is very high. The agriculture industry in Virginia is by far our largest industry, and our dairy farms are being lost by over one a week in Virginia. Let's help our farmers. Madam Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1357, a bill to amend and reenact Section 29.1553 of the Code of Virginia relating to sale of wildlife mounts, reported from agriculture, Chesapeake, and natural resources with amendment.
The delegate from Loudoun, Delegate LaRocque.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate LaRocque.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill would modify Virginia Code relating to the sale of game and fish mounts by allowing a resident who owns a mount legally taken in Virginia to sell the mount themselves rather than having to sell them through an auctioneer. Madam Speaker, I move the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 30 of the calendar, House Bill 1394 has gone by for the day. House Bill 37, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 4.1212 and 4.1314 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, stills or distilling apparatuses, permit required, reported from general laws.
The delegate from Spansylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 37 simply allows someone to operate a still for the purpose of distilling water without obtaining a permit from the ABC, and I would move its engrossment.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 90, a bill to amend and reenact Section 46.21052 of the Code of Virginia relating to window tinting, vehicles used in the course of businesses, of business, by private investigators and bail bondsmen, reported from transportation.
The delegate from Spansylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The House Bill 90 simply allows private investigators and bail bondsmen to have a darker tint on their vehicle windows. This has been requested as it would be beneficial for them and their line of work, and I move its engrossment.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 183, a bill to amend and reenact Section 42.170 of the Code of Virginia relating to libraries, assessment for costs in civil actions, dispersment for law libraries, reported from general laws.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Levine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 183 allows localities to better fund law libraries. It is permissive. It doesn't require localities to do anything. Ever since 1950, localities have been allowed to charge a very small sum on those who file civil lawsuits in order to fund law libraries. This would allow the locality, if they so choose, to raise that fee $3. It hasn't been raised for many decades. That's a very small amount of money for someone filing a civil lawsuit, and it's very important for access to justice, particularly by people who don't have lawyers. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 465, a bill to amend and reenact Section 46.21315 of the Code of Virginia relating to local regulation of certain transportation companies with an emergency clause, reported from transportation.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to explain this bill a little bit because for those of you who were here last year, 2019 session, you might remember this. Last year, Virginia actually led the nation in developing some regulation and language around these e-scooters that you see all around the country now. They're popular. Some people love them, some people hate them, but they're here now. And as we in Virginia and other states are trying to figure out how we should regulate these e-scooters that come into our neighborhoods, we in Virginia came up with the first language that defined e-scooters, which has now become a national standard that other states are adopting. And that bill, which was House Bill 2752 last year, was passed unanimously by our colleague Todd Pillion, for which I believe he deserves a standing ovation for passing something like that. But, all right, thank you. Yay, Todd! But Todd Pillion's bill had a clause which required local counties and local governments, which wanted to adopt these regulations, to do so by January of this past year, so two weeks ago. What I've heard from my localities as well, many other localities, is that they tried to get the ordinance done in time. They kind of rushed it. So some county- So some counties adopted, some did not. They're waiting to see other developments. And so, since we have a hard deadline, what this bill would do are four things. One, we would extend the deadline to October so that those counties and localities that have not adopted those ordinances can, if they want to, revisit the issue. Secondly, for those counties that did adopt it, they have a chance to go back and revisit it, revise it as they need to based on best practices coming across the country. Third, for those companies, like the companies that we see that offer this for commercial purposes, if they have already entered that business, they need to understand that they need to comply with some new regulations that may be coming so that they can be aware of some changes that might still happen. And fourth and finally, we add the emergency clause because if we're going to give our local governments a little more time, it wouldn't make sense for them to wait till July to start the process for an October 1 deadline. So hopefully it'll be the pleasure for a close unanimous vote on this today, and I hope I can engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 511, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.2, 614.5, and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to repeal Sections 10.1, 104.01, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to electric vehicle charging stations, operation by state agencies. Reported from Transportation with amendment.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 511 allows all state agencies to establish fee-based electric vehicle charging stations. Over the years, it's become evident that the public sector can play a critical role in establishing and building up electric vehicle infrastructure. And as a result, what this body has done over the years is slowly allow individual public agencies to install these stations. That includes public schools, local governments, public colleges and universities, state parks, DGS, VDOT, and DMV. And so this actually only leaves a handful of state agencies that cannot do this now, which doesn't make much sense. And so what this bill does, it simply streamlines the code and cuts down this Christmas tree. So anyways, Madam Speaker, I move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third—
Madam Speaker.
Yes. Delegate from Sponsylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
I yield.
The delegate will yield. Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just wondering if we aren't setting up a situation where the state government is going to be competing with the private sector as far as providing charging stations and, you know, it's almost like, as we transition to more electric vehicles, almost like allowing state governments to have filling stations in their parking lot, and I'm just concerned about that.
Delegate Boliva.
Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the gentleman's question. This actually should help out the private sector. Right now, public agencies can give away that electricity for free. The whole purpose of this is to make sure that they're actually charging for those stations. And there's actually language that the amendment put in to say that that has to be at competitive market prices. And so this is aimed specifically to make sure that public sector can have these stations, but is also careful to make sure that we don't undercut the private market.
Thank you.
Delegate Cole. Delegate from Franklin, Delegate Poindexter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wonder if the patron would rise for a question.
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I yield.
The delegate will yield. Delegate Poindexter.
Yes, I'd like to ask the patron, the source of the funds for purchasing and installing the charging stations at the state agencies, would the gentleman elaborate on that?
Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd be happy to answer that. And typically, these charging stations are installed by a private sector partner. And so there's a number of companies that will go ahead and do this, and so it's not generally the public sector agency that has to pay for the installation. That is handled through a partnership with the private sector.
Thank you, Delegate Poindexter.
I'd like to, gentlemen, have one further question.
Will the delegate yield?
I yield.
The delegate will yield. Delegate Poindexter.
Yes, I'd ask the gentleman if the funds that are coming into Virginia to the Commonwealth Attorney, Attorney General's Office and the Governor's Office for forfeiture cases at the national level, federal funds, for example, the Volkswagen settlement funds, are they being used for this purpose by our agencies?
Delegate Boliva.
Madam Speaker, my understanding is that that is part of the mix of funding options out there. This doesn't speak to the source of that funding, and of course, any fiscal impact for this would have to be submitted through the budget process as would anything else. So this doesn't speak to the budget aspect of it. It just authorizes state agencies to be able to implement these based on partnerships with private organizations, but doesn't talk to the funding source, which would have to go through a regular appropriations process.
I'd like to, gentlemen.
Thank you. Delegate from Faukeer, Delegate Weber.
Yes, would the gentleman yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I yield.
The delegate yields. Delegate Weber.
I would ask the gentleman, so if we pass this legislation, those delegates and senators that have electric vehicles, would they then have to pay while they're parked here?
Delegate Boliva.
Madam Speaker, I would answer the gentleman by saying that DGS would now have the option of being able to charge them while they are here.
I think the gentleman.
Thank you, Delegate. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 543, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.2, 100, and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 46.2, 904.1 relating to electric power-assisted bicycles. Reported from Transportation.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 543 regulates low-speed electric bicycles. The same rules of the road would apply to both e-bikes and human-powered bicycles when it comes to speed, proper passing, following local traffic laws, obeying posted speed limits, and other state and local ordinances. Changes to the code would define an electric-assisted bicycle as a device with two or three wheels which has a saddle and fully operative pedals for human propulsion, and an electric motor having a power output of not more than 750 watts. Three classes of e-bikes based on speed would also be established. Local governments would be allowed to restrict, regulate, or prohibit the use of e-bikes in their parks, on paths, and trails. I move that the House engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 598, a bill to amend and reenact Section 4.1, 210 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, annual mixed beverage performing arts facility license. Reported from General Laws with amendments.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 598 creates a mixed beverage performing arts license for a venue in Tysons, Virginia, Capital One Hall, located in Fairfax County. It authorizes the licensee to sell alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption on the dates of performances or events. Madam Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 630 on page 33 goes by for the day. House Bill 789 on page 34, by for the day. House Bill 949, by for the day. House Bill 1066, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.2, 842, and 46.2, 842.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to signals overtaking vehicle. Reported from Transportation with amendments.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 1066 seeks to remove the requirement for drivers to honk when passing on the right. This is enforceable with a fine of up to $250. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1088, a bill to amend and reenact Section 4.1, 212 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, walking tour permit. Reported from General Laws with substitute.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
House Bill 1088 would broaden permissions for walking tour companies to be able to visit breweries and other establishments licensed to sell alcoholic beverages, and include tasting fees for alcoholic beverages as part of the tour ticket price. Additionally, the bill would require the tour company to ensure that each tour includes no more than 15 participants per tour guide and no more than three tour guides. A tour, the tour guide must be present with participants throughout the duration of the tour, and all participants must be persons to whom alcoholic beverages may be lawfully sold. I move that the House engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Is there a motion for the committee substitute?
Move the substitute.
Okay. Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1142, a bill to amend and reenact Section 4.1, 309, and 16.1, 278.9 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, possession and sale of alcoholic beverages at school sporting events. Penalty. Reported from General Laws with amendments.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Tran.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. I would like to move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Tran.
Madam Speaker and members of the House, House Bill 1142 specifies that no person shall possess or drink alcohol while attending public elementary or secondary school-sponsored activities that are hosted at a non-school facility. Currently, our code only restricts alcohol consumption on school grounds during school activities, and this bill would extend those restrictions to other school-sponsored activities happening at other sites. Madam Speaker, I hope it is the will of the body to engross and pass this bill on to its third reading.
The delegate from Culpeper, Delegate Freitas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the patron yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield? I yield. The delegate will yield. Delegate Freitas.
So I can certainly sympathize with the intent. My question is, is so if there was an elementary school or a middle school event that was taking place at, say, one section of a golf course, would that mean that nobody could have a wine or a beer on the other side of the golf course since it all includes the same facility?
Madam Speaker, I would respond to the delegate. That's an excellent question that came up in debate on this issue as apparently golf is very popular and doesn't take place on school sites. And so the answer to the question is no. You just can't bring the alcoholic beverage to the golf—I don't play golf—to the golf course. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, would the delegate yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield? I yield. Delegate will yield.
So I would just, just to clarify, that's kind of my concern, is that when we talk about a facility, a facility could be everything as big as an entire stadium or a golf course where you've got the front nine and the back nine, or—so there could clearly be a situation where one side where the event was going on was clearly separated from another portion of the facility. So the question is, is one side of the facility okay provided that it's not intermixing with whatever youth sporting event is going on?
Madam Speaker, I would respond to the delegate, yes.
I think the delegate.
Thank you. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading?
Madam Speaker.
Yes. Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Gilbert.
Madam Speaker, if I heard right, and I could be wrong, but it would appear that every high school golf tournament everywhere where anybody is playing golf on any other part of the facility would be prohibited from bringing their own alcohol or drinking alcohol or being sold alcohol or purchased alcohol at that facility. And I don't know that that's what the delegate intended, and if I heard wrong, I apologize. But golf is very popular, and drinking while you're playing golf is also very popular, I'm told. So I don't know if that goes beyond her intent. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Does the delegate yield?
Yes, ma'am. If I could clarify, Madam Speaker.
Delegate Tran.
This limits the consumption of alcohol at the school-sponsored event, and so—I'm sorry, at the school-sponsored activity. And so if golf is an example, and I apologize, that's not my sport, and so it's hard for me to use as a metaphor, you wouldn't be able to bring your alcoholic beverage to the course where the students are playing golf. If you were in other areas of the golf course or the golf club, I don't know, then that would be allowed. We were trying to work that through. The terms "school-sponsored activity" actually mirrors language that is in the code restricting where you're able to smoke. And so in a bill that had passed, I believe in the last session or the one before, so we were trying to be consistent with what's already in the code and restrictions around smoking and applying it to the same idea here.
The delegate from Hanover, Delegate Fowler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the patron yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
Sure, one more.
The delegate will yield. One more. Delegate Fowler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a quick question. I mean, I know where I live, most of the golf courses are private property, and again, they allow the school golf teams to compete on the private golf course. So again, would this law apply to private property or just, you say, public property or public golf course?
That's an excellent question. This would apply, Madam Speaker. This bill would apply to all facilities that are hosting school events.
All right. I thank the patron. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1187, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 4.1, 103, and many other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, online sales of spirits by the Virginia Alcoholic Beverage Control Authority. Reported from General Laws with substitute.
The delegate from Washington, Delegate Wampler.
Madam Speaker, I'd move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Wampler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the House, House Bill 1187 is a bill to allow Virginia distilleries, currently referred to as and regulated as government stores in the ABC Code, to sell distilled spirits and lower-alcohol beverage spirits online, with the ability to ship these orders directly from the local distilleries to the homes of Virginians who are over the age of 21. Anyone taking a receipt would have to show proof of age verification, and this could also apply to restaurant licensees in the ABC Code. As simply as I can put it, this measure, if it finds favor on the floor today, will allow Virginia distilleries to sell their products on the Internet, which I believe will level the competitive playing field for those who participate in the beverage industry. I think this bill strikes a balance between Virginia being a control state and also encouraging entrepreneurial Virginians who offer some of these products to compete. I hope the House will engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1259, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.2, 1222.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to regulation or prohibition of parking of certain vehicles in certain counties and towns, reported from transportation.
The delegate from Middlesex, Delegate Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 1259 adds the town of West Point to the list of counties and towns that are permitted to regulate or prohibit the parking on any public highway of watercraft, boat trailers, motorhomes, and camping trailers, and to regulate or prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles on any public highway in a residence district. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 390, on page 21 of the calendar, has gone by for the day. Madam Speaker, that completes the calendar.
Per House Rule 51, the House has returned to morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
Meetings for Tuesday afternoon, January 28. General Laws Committee meets one half after adjournment of the House in House Room 3. General Laws Subcommittee on Open Government and Procurement meets immediately upon adjournment of the full committee, House Room 3. General Laws ABC Gaming Subcommittee meets two hours after adjournment of full committee, House Room 3. Labor and Commerce Committee meets one half hour after adjournment of the House, House Committee Room. Labor and Commerce Subcommittee Number 1 meets immediately upon adjournment of the full committee, House Committee Room. Press Conference on HB 1532 meets at 1:30, House Briefing Room. Appropriations Compensation and General Government Subcommittee meets at 4:00 PM, Shared Committee Room. Health Welfare and Institutions, Health Subcommittee meets 4:00 PM, House Room 1. Transportation, Transportation Innovation and General Topics Subcommittee, 4:30 PM, 400A Subcommittee Room. That's a change in time, 4:30 PM. Career and Technical Education Caucus, 4:30 PM, 200B Subcommittee Room. Meetings for Wednesday morning, January 29. Speakers Interfaith Devotional, 7:00 AM, Sixth Floor Speakers Conference Room. Agriculture Chesapeake and Natural Resources, Natural Resources Subcommittee, 7:00 AM, House Room 3. That's a change in time, 7:00 AM. Education, Pre-K Subcommittee Room. This is an additional meeting of Education Pre-K Subcommittee, 7:00 AM, House Committee Room. Education Committee, 8:00 AM, House Committee Room. Education, Post-Secondary and Higher Ed Subcommittee, immediately upon adjournment of full committee, House Committee Room. Privileges and Elections, Gubernatorial Appointments Subcommittee, 8:00 AM, 400A Subcommittee Room. Joint Women's Healthcare Caucus, 8:00 AM, 300B Subcommittee Room. Communications Technology and Innovation, Technology and Innovation Subcommittee, 8:30 AM, House Room 1. That's a change in location, House Room 1. Press Conference, Sane Coordinator, Bill Press Conference, 8:30 AM, House Briefing Room. Women's Round Table, League of Women Voters, 8:30 AM, SunTrust Building, Fourth Floor, Tidewater Room. Press Conference, Topic Reasons to Oppose Physician-Assisted Suicide, 9:00 AM, House Briefing Room. Agriculture Chesapeake and Natural Resources Committee, 9:00 AM, House Room 3. Appropriations, Health and Human Resources Subcommittee, 9:00 AM, 300A Subcommittee Room. Republican Caucus meets 11:00 AM, House Room 2. Democratic Caucus, 11:00 AM, House Room 1. Madam Speaker, that completes my announcements.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an announcement.
Delegate Sickles, you have the floor.
I just want to alert the body that if your bill has been, your health-related bill has been sent to Appropriations Bill tomorrow's 9:00 AM meeting, which was just announced, we will hear your bills, two minutes each, and...but we will not be taking any action on the bill. I just wanted to make sure. We're just going to hear everybody's bill, we won't be taking any action on those bills reported to the HHR Subcommittee. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Reed.
Madam Speaker, since we are already in the first morning hour, I'd like to rise to make a motion, and then I'd like to speak to the motion.
Delegate Reed, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory and honor of my dad, Myron Vaden Reed. He died quietly last night, just from old age. He was within 18 days of his 96th birthday. So now I'd like to speak to that motion.
Delegate Reed, you have the floor.
Like generations of Reeds before him, since at least the 1700s, he was born and raised in Rockbridge County, Virginia. When they started naming roads up Long Hollow Road, they named the road we lived on Reed's Hill Road. Not because we were famous, or not because we were wealthy, it was just because of longevity. The youngest of three children, his mother died from tuberculosis when he was 10 years old. His dad then remarried and had three more children, so a typical 1930s family of six children. As part of that greatest generation, when his nation called on him to help defend our nation, he left the mountains of Virginia and traveled to far off Europe to fight against fascisms, Nazis, and the forces that were bent on world domination. He entered the Army when he was 19 years old and served from February of 1943 until November of 1945, serving almost the entire time in Europe. While in the service, he received the following decorations: the American Theater Ribbon, the European African Middle East Theater Ribbon with two bronze battle stars, and the all-important World War II Victory Medal. And he did all of this with a ninth-grade education. Returning from the war, he found work in a local factory as a loom tender, where he worked for 20 years. Later in life, I remember asking him, "You worked there for 20 years, and you have no pension or no long-term medical care." His response was very telling, and he said, "Yeah, it was not a very good deal." In 1968, when my mom left home, she left him to take care of five children, ranging in age from 2 to 16, so working shift work at the factory was no longer feasible. He left his job at the factory and started doing handyman work around Buena Vista, Virginia. I have fond memories as an eight- or a nine-year-old going on jobs with my dad, learning how to paint, how to hang wallpaper, do basic electrical and plumbing work, and how to paint a tin roof without falling off. My dad made sure we were never hungry, we always had a roof over our heads. We ate a lot of oatmeal, brown beans, and bologna sandwiches, but we weren't hungry. But in 1971, my dad made only about $3,000, and it was becoming increasingly difficult to feed and clothe a family of five. He was smart enough to recognize that he couldn't adequately provide for us, so he moved us to the United Methodist Children's Home here in Richmond. And later, he signed over guardianship of me and my youngest brother to foster parents. All the decisions he made along the way, all the selfless sacrifices, was to provide us an opportunity for a better life. This is what parents do. The tie that binds all of us together, regardless of our political affiliation, regardless of where we are in the world, every parent wants our children to have a better life than we did. My dad can now rest, knowing that he achieved that one universal goal for every parent. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate Reed moves that when the House adjourned today, it adjourned in the honor and memory of Myron Vaden Reed. All those in favor, please rise. Motion is agreed to. We're all sending you straight. We're all thinking of you and Barbara and the family, David. Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move when the House adjourns today, it adjourns to reconvene Wednesday, January 29 at 12 noon.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that when the House adjourned today, it adjourns to reconvene Wednesday, January 29, 2020, at 12 o'clock noon. As many as favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that the House do now adjourn. As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until Wednesday, January 29, 2020, at 12 o'clock noon.